Thank you so much. So we're going to start rotation back with Ms. Bowline. And this is question number four. How will you remain independent and nonpartisan in supporting our children, obtain the education necessary to succeed at the next steps of life?
That's a really great question. So I think everybody at this table has political beliefs in one way or another. But I think what's really important is thinking first about what's going to be the best thing for our students. And that is the way I've approached all things that I've advocated for. I think it's really important that we know where to find the right answers. And I've recently spent a bunch of time with Kathy Hood, who's our current school board treasurer, learning a lot about how the budget works and wanting to make sure I understand that. I've got administrators and board members and all kinds of different people that I can speak with when I need more information about educational policy. And then, of course, there's Google. So I've been spending a lot of time making sure that I know enough to make good decisions. And it's been my personal philosophy that no decisions are hard if we have enough information. And that is the way I will approach every decision that I would make from this table. Thank you.
Mr. Holman, do you need to repeat the question? Or you're good?
No, I think I'm good.
Okay.
So as I talked about earlier, you know, making sure we're intentional about preparing our kids regardless of what direction they want to go with their career. I think that when we're thinking about how we implement initiatives in the district, I think that they should be data-driven or at least have a defined outcome so that we know whether or not we're being successful in supporting our students in that way. So it's not just about what are our kids' SAT scores? What are our kids' acceptance rates into colleges? You know, it's about are they prepared for success when they exit Novi? And that doesn't have to necessarily be with the college career path.
Thank you so much. Latasha Keller.
Thank you. So my political views have no place in the position of being a board member. Students, you know, are always first, first and foremost. I believe as a board member, I would look at the data. I would, you know, listen to everyone's point of view and make the best and the most informed decision based on the evidence, facts, and what's in front of me. I couldn't sit here and tell you how I would vote one way or another. If I could do that, then I don't think you should be a board member. I would need to look at the data and make an informed decision.
Thank you so much, Mr. Michener.
Yes, could you repeat the question?
Sure. How will you remain independent and nonpartisan in supporting our children, obtain the education necessary to succeed at the next steps of life?
Thank you. So one of the ways I will be able to do that is by increasing my skills and abilities in areas where, you know, I need to improve in order to be an effective board member. I've already started that process. I've already joined the National Association of Parliamentarians to improve my effectiveness as a board member. So I understand Robert's rules, the way every board operates here in the city, so that I can do the most with the time that I have while I'm in these public forums with the community. That's an example of how seriously I take this job if I'm elected to be on the board. And then how I can achieve outcomes for everybody, all of our students. I think by addressing the places where we've already identified Novi could improve, like the education gap we have for Black students here in Novi. I believe education gaps are indication that something systematically isn't going well. It's like a warning light in your car. If you can fix it, the whole car does better. So I think it would improve outcomes for all students if we can address those things, like the education gap for our Black students in Novi. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next question, Mr. Holman. What do you feel about banning books in our schools?
So I'm not for banning books. I've stood at that podium and said that I think that everybody should be reading books that make them uncomfortable. That being said, I do think that there are certain boundaries that should apply to public schools that are obviously different than a public library. I think that some, there was one book in particular that another parent read quotes from, and there have been other books that are graphic novels that are essentially pornographic. I don't think that if we as candidates sat in a room together and read some of those, we would probably agree that maybe there are certain books like that that don't need to be in our public schools. That being said, I think every kid deserves to see themselves in the books that are available in our public libraries, and we should ensure that they have those available too.
Thank you so much, Latasha Keller.
I think there is a standard. I think there is a standard. I think some things are appropriate and some things are not appropriate. And that's in many areas of life, like there's just a standard. So do I think certain books should be banned? In schools, I think our jobs are to protect our students. I think we should be approaching different scenarios from more of a trauma-informed approach. And I do think certain books may not have a place in our public schools. That's not to say that you can't access it anywhere else, but in public schools, we have to have a standard.
Thank you, Mr. Michener.
Yes, so I would align myself with American Library Association, Michigan Library Association, and our first amendment right to freedom of speech and not restrict any books. I feel like our libraries and our media centers are source of resource and information for all our students. And as a five-time published children's book illustrator myself and a member of the Equity and Inclusion Committee of the Society of Children's Book Writers and Illustrators of Michigan, I strongly support having access to books that provide windows and mirrors to our students, being able to see somebody not like yourself through a book that maybe you wouldn't have exposure to otherwise, and also be able to see yourself reflected like a mirror in a book that represents you, your whole self. So I believe restriction doesn't have a place in our education system. And I believe our teachers are professionally trained educators and can choose the curriculum that best suits what they're trying to educate our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Bowline.
I do not support book banning. I do want to share with everyone that our schools already have a policy in place where a parent may request an alternative assignment if they feel the content of a course is not appropriate for their specific child. I don't believe that we should allow certain one or two parents to dictate what is available to the community at large. I think it's really important that our students have information available to them when they want to seek that out. And I believe that most of our students would agree with that. Recently, one of our Novi students, Chris Ramani, went to Washington DC and spoke with the Congress Theater, and this is a quote from what she shared. "Efforts to regulate what can be taught in the classroom discredit young people's ability to understand nuanced arguments." And she said that these efforts silence voices that we want and we deserve to hear. Novi is home to some of the most brilliant students I've met in my life, and they can handle nuanced arguments and they can understand hard things. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Moving on, this time I've got a question which our screeners are recommending. It would give you two minutes, timers, and it's somewhat long. So if you want me to read it twice, that will be just fine. And this question, we would begin with Ms. Latasha Keller. So are you ready? This position requires board members to listen and work together with parents who may have differing viewpoints. How have you demonstrated you can work with others with different opinions and viewpoints? Please give examples. There's more. What will you do as board members to ensure all PowerPoints are heard, to include those that differ from you? I'm going to read it one more. I'm going to read it one more time. This position requires board members to listen and work together with parents who may have different viewpoints. How have you demonstrated you can work with others with different opinions and viewpoints? And it says, give examples, please. What will you do as board members to ensure all viewpoints are heard, to include those that differ from you?
So I always welcome different viewpoints. I mean, Novi is very diverse. You know, we all don't think the same. We all don't believe the same things. So, you know, it would be naive to not think that, you know, I won't run into different viewpoints that are different from my own. I do consider myself to be a really active listener. I am very, you know, empathetic and compassionate to other people, even people with opposing viewpoints. So as a nurse, I have to work with people with opposing viewpoints all of the time. You know, in the nursing setting, when you're working with, you know, multidisciplinary team, like I'm not always going to agree with the doctor or, you know, the occupational therapist or whoever on what I feel may be best for the patient or what the patient may feel is best for the patient. My role is to advocate and be a resource and be a support to that patient. Sometimes you have to take yourself out of the equation, and it's okay to do that. So I would just, I would welcome all viewpoints. I mean, I would sit, I would listen to them. I would... You know, analyze and see...
...relations in their schools and communities. And those discussions sometimes got very heated, even though we had a very common goal and vision, we had to listen to each other and kind of figure out what was going on. And we had to take input from the applications, obviously. And then my time as a board member for my homeowners association, there were some very challenging issues we had at the city level that we had to deal with. It involved getting the input from the community members that lived in my neighborhood, understanding what the city was doing, understanding what another third party was doing, understanding all the laws and regulations and kind of putting them all together and trying to come up with the best possible solution for my community that I was voted to help run the HOA. So those are some two issues, but I think teamwork is always essential, and I think open and honest discussion is essential. So I need to listen, but then also have discussion. And I feel like I will always bring an open, honest discussion to the board. I will always come prepared, ready to discuss the issues. And regardless of what the issue is, you will understand why I voted the way I did because I'll have a discussion with my fellow board members before I vote either way. It's all about teamwork. It's something that I learned in athletics coming up in high school and college, and I pray and bring that to the board if you would choose to elect me. Thank you.
Thank you too. Ms. Bowline?
So I think that when we think about how we can all work together, one thing, and this is actually from Mr. Venka's interview for superintendent that stuck with me, was he talked about if we start with our common values. So I know everybody at this table cares about our students. I know everybody that sits here every other Thursday cares about our students. So we all have different ideas of maybe how we can best handle different topics and what's the right way to navigate things. And the reality is there's not always going to be a right answer. So what we have to do as a board is seek to understand each other first. And that's something the kids aren't in elementary, but as grownups, we need a reminder. And when I sit here and say, okay, Jason, tell me why you think we need to do this? Just explain the why. Because the way my brain works is I need to understand why something matters. And then maybe we find out that, okay, well, you think we need to do this option, but actually, we can achieve the same goal if we go with option B. So let's talk about how do we blend together the very diverse perspectives into a solution that'll meet the needs of the most students in our district? Because that's really why everyone is here. In terms of working with people that I don't always agree with, I've had a number of different jobs in my life, and I will tell you, none of them have been with people that always agree with me. That was not my experience in high school. It was not my experience in college. It's not been my experience in my life. And what we have to do is respect each other and explain our reasoning about why we think things are important and figure out ways to make sure that we all work together. I have several very close friends who do not always agree with me politically, and we still love and honor each other in the ways that we can. And I think that as a school board, we have to honor each other the best we can with integrity and honesty of our views. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Holman?
Thanks. I'll cross off Ben's quote from, it's about very down to a common set of values. That was one of the best lines I've heard of any superintendent interview. So, you know, in my day job, I work with employers who offer employee benefits. As you can imagine, their strategies are very different based on the type of employees they have, you know, employers that are very heavily unionized, that are very paternalistic. Some are much more aggressive. But what is important is making sure that we get all of our stakeholders in a room to understand everybody's perspective so that when we make those decisions, we are considering all of those. And to Jason's point, I think it's important that, you know, as board members, most of the decisions that we vote on, there are going to be people who disagree with them. When we are aware of what those disagreements might be, I think it is our responsibility to, you know, not only explain why we voted for something, but why we voted against it so that the community has that transparency into our decision-making process, you know? One of the things we saw in the last year in Novi was that we offered students the ability to get a PE credit through other things that certainly should qualify them for that, you know, kids who are in band, you know, out in the hot weather for hours a day that can now get PE credit for that. And the board voted to approve that. And then the very next week, we had our physical education teachers came in speaking out against that because they were not even really aware that that was happening. So that was an example where, you know, one of the critical stakeholders, they didn't feel heard during that process. And I think it's important as board members that we make sure that all stakeholders are heard and understand our decision-making process.
Thank you so much. We've got a little bit more time here, so I'm going to go to question number seven. Please give a specific example of how you supported education during the pandemic. Read word, Mr. Michener.
The most practical and real experience for me was sitting in the living room, watching my child every day during virtual school, go through the lesson plan, and helping him find his papers, helping him with the assignments, kind of being a teacher's aide every day while trying to still attend my work meetings and get my work done every day. It gave me a really good experience for what the teachers must go through because I only have one child in that room, whereas most teachers probably have around 20 or so kids. So I think that that gave me an eye-opening experience to what a tremendous job our teachers do every day for our students and what hard work it is. I think practically, the best thing that I could do as a board member is make sure that, again, have policies and procedures that support that teaching process and make sure that we're maintaining our facilities in a way that facilitate good learning for children, no matter where they are, what they may need, and make sure that that's available all the time, every time for our teachers so they don't have to go look for it or procure it themselves.
Thank you so much. I should probably remind you we're back to one-minute questions. In case you forgot. Let's see, Ms. Bowline?
Could you repeat it for me?
Sure. Please give a specific example of how you supported education during the pandemic.
That was a really tricky year for us all, wasn't it? So my family, with our three children, we chose virtual school. And the reasons we chose that were quite few, but primarily, I would say, it was because we wanted consistency for the kids. I ended up leaving my job for that school year so I could be home to support the kids in school during what I think was a really hard year. That time gave me an opportunity also, though, to support their teachers. And I made sure that in addition to helping my children learn the skills to make sure they were on virtual school on time, which is very tricky when you have a kindergartener and a fourth grader and a sixth grader, and everything's at different times. We made sure to get everybody there on time with a good attitude, made sure we communicated regularly, and I really took a lot of effort to make sure the teachers had what they needed from my family to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you too, Mr. Holman.
So in retrospect during the pandemic, I think that virtual might be what we would have chose. We put our kids in a hybrid model, which our kids were in two days a week, out of a class two days a week, and then a virtual day. So one of the things that we had to very quickly do was contact our teachers, particularly my daughter's high school teachers, to try to get a syllabus, make sure we were understanding to keep her on track, particularly in an AP class that she had. I know that that was an enormously difficult time for teachers, trying to understand where every single kid in their class was. When, you know, when your kids are in front of you every day, it's much easier to understand where they are, but when they're there two days a week, that's not easy. So, you know, for us, it was trying to keep our kids on track on those days off so that when they were in front of their teacher, they were kind of right where they needed to be.
Thank you, Ms. Keller.
We also chose the hybrid model, and fortunately, it didn't work out that well. Both my husband and I both worked full-time, so it was really, really difficult for our family. I spent a lot of time playing teacher as well. I purchased a lot of supplemental materials to help my daughter along with the education that she unfortunately wasn't receiving with the hybrid model. I also attended the board meetings. I did advocate for our students to return in person because I saw devastating effects of the hybrid model and how it impacted our lives personally and how it impacted my daughter's mental health as well, so.
Okay. We do have time for a couple more questions. I hope you do too. Okay. Question number eight. I believe we go back to Ms. Bowline. I'll read it slowly, and if you want, I'll repeat it. So this school year, Novi has already had Black students who have experienced racial trauma in Novi schools. I would like to have your plan for addressing, educating, and supporting, and doing what you can to eradicate racial trauma in our school district for Black students.
Thank you. I won't need to repeat it. Thank you. So one thing Mr. Michener alluded to earlier is that our Black students in this, in our high school, there is a learning gap happening there. And one thing that I'm aware of is that our Black students are about four times more likely to be in our credit recovery program where they're at risk of losing or not graduating. So they're really credit deficient. One of the things we can do is to work to reverse some of the impacts of racism and racial trauma. So if we look at ways that we know help to navigate that, having teachers that look like our students, especially our Black students, has been shown to impact their graduation rates and educational performance. But it also comes back just to that culture of belonging and making sure that the students in our building all feel seen and heard and appreciated, and that they can see themselves in their literature as well as their teachers.
Thank you. Mr. Holman?
Yeah, so I think as the last school board meeting, Dr. Corino had mentioned that they were starting to address, you know, making sure all of our students can see themselves in our teachers through, you know, making our pool of teachers that we hire from more diverse. I think that that is the right approach to that. At the same time, you know, we on the board are not experts in every single issue and how to approach some of these issues. So I think that, you know, listening to the experts in this area, trying to have some thoughtful conversation on how we could approach that. I think, you know, ensuring that kids have a sense of community in their classroom and that, you know, whatever their skin color is, whatever their gender is, you know, they should know that when they go to school, those things are not kind of the thing that they're most identified by with their fellow students. It should be the least remarkable thing about them.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keller.
So I think we need to have policies that provide protection and safety for students who experience racism. I think it's important that students of color see themselves in their teachers, but also just in all positions of power or authority. I feel like their voices should be heard and valued, and they need to be supported. I do think we tend to cover up or hide these issues and pretend that they don't exist. And I think it needs to be broadcasted, like people need to know that these things are happening and that, you know, even in Novi, as great as it is, it happens. And, you know, we need to, we need to do better, and we need to support these students better.
Thank you, Mr. Michener.
Yes, so I think if I was on the board, the first practical thing I would do is take the DEI committee that the board already has and make sure that it meets on a more regular basis, at least once a month. I know right now the intention is for it to be quarterly, and so far, it's met twice this year, so it kind of missed the third quarter meeting. But in that committee, there's been amazing data presented by the administration of our school district, literally thick packets showing how the students respond and how they feel in classes, if they feel like they've been treated in a way that's racially profiled them, if they feel othered or set apart. But I haven't seen our board taking any action on that data. So I feel like the data and evidence is there. We just need to do something with it. And I'm not suggesting by any means that there's a quick solution, although I don't think that that's a reason to not do anything or drag our feet. I feel like we need to find an issue, try and implement it, a solution, and solve it, and then evaluate how it does. That's the best way we solve engineering problems all the time in my job. The worst thing we can do is do nothing, though, because that guarantees we won't make any progress.
Okay. Thank you so much. Question number nine. Just a check. This one goes to Mr. Holman. What is your view on teachers' importance in education? How will... How will you ensure support of them regardless of your varied opinions?
So I think every one of us up here has a tremendous amount of respect for teachers. Otherwise, we would probably be homeschooling our parents. I think that our teachers deserve to be supported, but I think that that is a partnership with parents. So I think one of the things, one of the things that I've advocated for is transparency in curriculum and transparency in professional development. So probably a lot of the issues that get brought up, for instance, you had talked about books earlier, you know, what books kids are exposed to in class. I think that our eighth grade ELA teachers from middle school should really be a model for how transparency happens in our school district. Last June, they sent out a list of all the readings that would be coming up in the following year, and that gave parents all summer to be engaged with what their kids would be involved in. So I think that transparency is key to that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keller.
So I think teachers are super important. I mean, I don't want your jobs. I think it's very hard to be a teacher, so much respect. I also think parents are students' first teachers. And so I do think that it is a partnership between parents and teachers in teaching students and raising students. I think we all want what's best for our students here in this district. Sometimes we don't agree with how that happens, but at the end of the day, we all want what's best, and we all just need to work together and make that happen.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mishner.
Yes, could you repeat the question?
What is your view on teachers' importance in education? How will you ensure support of, how will you ensure support of them regardless of your varied opinions?
I think that's what makes up the school district, right? The school's primary function is to educate our children, our students. And the teachers are the resource for doing that, for getting that done. So I think that's paramount. If we don't have quality educators and if we can't retain quality educators, then we don't have a quality school district. So I think the biggest thing that I would do is to make sure that the board is allowing the teachers to be able to teach, providing them with the tools, the funding, and the resources to be able to do so. And I don't really think that my personal views would come into play there because if I'm a school board member, my main responsibility is to help run this school district and make this district the best district it can and elevate it as much as possible. And I think that starts with supporting and caring for and listening to our teachers.
Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Bowline.
I've said a number of times this evening that I have tremendous respect and admiration for the educators in this district, not just our teachers, but our administrators and our parapros and the bus drivers and the lunch parents and all of the people who make the day safe and wonderful for our children. I think that their role in educating my kids, while secondary to my own, in that I'm going to instill the values in my family the way that we feel, we have what we feel we should, our teachers are some of the most important people that our kids are ever kids. And they deserve to be treated with respect and given the opportunity to really do what they do best. When I tried to teach my oldest one how to read, I can tell you in kindergarten, it did not go great for me because I did not know how to teach. And I have a lot of respect for our teachers after that experience because going to school and teaching are not the same thing. I'm proud to say also that I have the endorsement of our teachers in this district, and they know I have them. They're back.
Thank you so much. We have time for one more. And we will start with Ms. Keller. What are your views on a parent's right to know what their child identifies as while in school?
I think it is a parent's right because parents, a parent's job is to protect their So I think, I don't think school should be hiding that or prohibiting parents from knowing that information. I see it as a safety issue. If something, you know, happens to this child and the parents have no idea like what is going on, I have an issue with that. So, you know, I know it's a sticky subject currently, but I do think that it is a parent's responsibility to know that information.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mishner.
So I think the parent-teacher relationship is a critical one, and I think that good communication is essential to making this process work. I'm always in constant communication with my child's parent, my child's teacher, who has a parent, to understand where he's at, what he needs, and what I can do better for him. And those, and then in those communications, other things may come up with how he's doing socially, what he may be liking or not liking at recess, games, even if he doesn't like a certain snack that I'm packing. So I feel like essentially, good communication between the parent and the teacher is where this all starts. And if that is something that's important to you, communicate that with your teacher that your child has. And I feel like at that core level, teacher, parent, child, that's where all that starts. And so that kind of communication is essential.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bowline.
So members of the LGBTQ community are more likely to experience bullying in school and out, violence generally, harassment, mental health problems, as well as depression and deadly suicide. Our schools are tasked with keeping our children safe. And unfortunately, in some circumstances, that does include from their parents. Well, I think it is a very rare situation that it would be unsafe for a child to come out at home. I think that does occur, and I think that that's the reason our state has offered guidance on this issue and recommends that school officials use a student's legal name as well as their pronouns from birth when they contact the guardians unless the parent or the student has specified otherwise. It's a matter of safety in some homes, unfortunately, and so I think as a school, we need to make sure our kids are safe for liability reasons as well as moral ones. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and Mr. Holman.
Yeah, so I think a parent's right to know what their child identifies in school is absolute. You know, our counselors have protocols that they follow. If there is a dangerous situation in the home, for instance, you know, a child felt threatened, then CPS would have to be called. But as far as gender identity, I think that it's far too important to not include parents in that conversation. Kids who suffer from gender dysphoria, almost 50% of the, 50% of people who suffer from gender dysphoria at some point during their life have suicidal ideation, 23% attempt suicide. The idea that that information would be kept from a parent is an egregious breach, would be an egregious breach of the trust that we put in our public schools.
Thank you so much. That does conclude the questions for this evening. So now we're going to move to the section where you will be giving us your one-minute closing statement. So since we started with Ms. Bowline, we're going to give Mr. Mishner the opportunity to be prepared. And then we're going to go from the right to the left. Mr. Mishner.
So first, I'd like to thank Legal Women Voters for hosting this event. I'd like to thank all the Novi community members that came out with all their questions and just your interest to get to know us. I really appreciate that. I am hopeful that come November 8th, I will secure your vote and serve you up here on the board. And again, I just want to reiterate, I promise you that I will come prepared every single board meeting to discuss all the matters in a public forum, which I feel is so valuable because this school district doesn't succeed without the community. And the public forum, these board meetings, is where that community and the district and the administration all need to come together. So I want to honor that process and uphold it with the most integrity possible, and I will do whatever it takes to make sure that I'm prepared, is educated, and ready to serve and decide on issues that come before the school board in a very timely and succinct manner that will benefit everybody and elevate this school district and maintain its center of excellence, hopefully not just in Michigan, but nationwide. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Keller.
Thank you. Thank you, Legal Women Voters, for having me here. Thank you for all of you guys who came to ask your questions and meet the candidates. Some of you don't know me, so hopefully you got a chance to get to know me a little bit better. I love this community. I love, you know, the family vibe that I get from Novi, who had an amazing experience, my family and I being here. I look forward to getting to know you guys more. Hopefully, you guys will vote for me on your absentee ballot or November 8th. Thank you. And yeah, I just look forward to being more involved in the community like I have been and serving you, the community, on the board as well. So thank you for your support and your time. Thank you.
Mr. Holman.
Thank you. So my motivation run for school board started in the fall of 2020 when our in-person students were dealing with only seeing their teachers two days a week in a hybrid model. As a parent, I saw that it wasn't working for many students, including my own, and pleaded with our administration to pivot and put our students back in school four to five days a week like neighboring districts had done. Those pleas fell on deaf ears and our students' academic progress and mental health suffered because we didn't put our students first. That simple principle is what we'll always guide as a member of the board, putting our students first. When the NEA contract is up at the end of the year, we need to ensure that we're supporting our teachers with salary and benefits that make them want to be here because retaining great teachers puts our students first. When we're considering mental health resources and making licensed counselors available to our students in consultation with their families, it's the right thing to do because the well-being of our students is paramount. When parents advocate for more transparency in curriculum and professional development so they can make decisions that are right for their child, it's the right thing to do because it puts students first. As a board member, you will never have to guess what motivates my decision-making process and will be putting our students first.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bowline?
So a lot of people have asked me why I decided to run, and I'm surprised I didn't really come up here tonight. I don't have one specific reason. I have about 7,000 reasons. We have about that many students in this district. And I will show up every time to look for what is the best solution for our kids, not just as a whole, but individually, how can we meet the needs of our individual students in this district. I've had wonderful blessings of amazing educators in this district, and I know most of us have had that same experience. I think we need to retain our teachers. We need to work on finding creative solutions for mental health of our students and our teachers, and we need to make sure that we are showing up as supportive collaborative adults for our kids each day. Thank you, Legal Women Voters, and thank you to all of you for doing this with me tonight. This has been very informative, at least for me, and a great experience. So thank you all, and thanks to the public for showing up. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I do have a few thank yous before all of you leave us tonight. First of all, thank you candidates for stepping up and volunteering to work for the students of this school district. Secondly, I'd like to thank the audience. You really sent amazing questions, some of which we've never seen before. And I, you're all very thoughtful and polite and really appreciate all of that because school board elections are very important. Next, I'd like to thank the cable crew. Legal women voters, as most, 99% of the time, will not conduct a candidate forum unless a candidate, I'm sorry, when a cable crew is present because we feel that's important to share this information with those who couldn't participate tonight. And thanks for my team, our timers, our screeners, and thank you for the district and giving us this wonderful space. Please be safe and stay safe. Thanks so much.
All right, everybody. Thank you for watching. We are going to go ahead and conclude here, but I do appreciate all of the visitors that came to the, came and watched and hopefully gave you an idea of what is actually happening in Novi, who the candidates are. Please go check out all of the candidates to see what, if what they say in here matches what they do outside, and continue to follow this race. Thank you and good night.